Meeting kind of order, please. Roll call members, pressure present button, please. Soon as it comes up. We got two missing. Record it. Staff.
Announcements?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I've got a couple of announcements for you. First of all, I'd like for each of you haven't already to welcome our two new Planning Commission members. We have Mr. Keith McCord has joined us. He is taking Paul Pratt's place. Paul Pratt Jr.'s place, I should say. And secondly, we have Ms. Rhonda Rose, and she is taking Pete Mosley's place. And welcome you all aboard. Thank you for agreeing to serve. Secondly, you will note there's a great deal of correspondence in front of you regarding items thirteen and fourteen. Just want to point that out to you. Third, item sixteen, as a reminder, has been withdrawn. And Mike has a short announcement he would like to make.
Yeah, thanks, Joe. So you do have a lot of information in front of you, but I don't want you to overlook one important piece, and that is that you have in front of you the public review draft of the updated comprehensive land use plan. So this is the version of the plan that has been developed by our consultants and staff. This is the version of the plan that is being recommended by the advisory committee, which does include, I think, about half of this commission actually has served as a member of the advisory committee. This plan was the product of very significant public participation and feedback and direction along the way from both the County Commission and the Planning Commission. So next month, you will be asked to adopt the plan at your March meeting. And so if you would, you know, over the next month or so, please make sure you're familiar with the plan. And if you have any questions whatsoever, don't hesitate to give me a call.
Any other announcements?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Consideration of the minutes of January nine, any corrections, changes? Motion made and seconded. Prepare to vote. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Consideration of the consent agenda. Any commissioner wishing to pull an item from the consent agenda, please say so now, otherwise we will take it as a whole. Anyone? I see none. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with item three, Hart's Landmark Maintenance Bond for Water. Twenty thousand six hundred dollars. Recommendation: Extend current amount for a period of one year. Item four, Lookaway Farms, Section One, Performance Bond for Wastewater Collection System. Two hundred eighty-two thousand dollars. Recommendation: Convert to maintenance in the amount of eighty-four thousand six hundred dollars for two years. Number five, Lookaway Farms, Section One, Performance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control. Four hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. Recommendation: Extend current amount for a period of one year. Item six, Silverstream Farms, Section Four F, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control. Fifty thousand dollars. Recommendation: Release the bond. Item seven, Silverstream Farms, Section Four G, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control. Fifty thousand dollars. Recommendation: Release the bond. Item eight, Stevens Valley, Section Three, Performance Bond for Water and Sewer. Twenty-four thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. Recommendation: Defer until March 2020 meeting. Item nine, Stevens Valley, Section Three, Performance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control. Three hundred five thousand dollars. Recommendation: Extend current amount for a period of one year. And item ten, Troubadour, Section Three, Performance Bond for Wastewater Collection System. Eighty-seven thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Recommendation: Extend current amount for a period of six months.
Questions on consent? Motion made and seconded. Prepare to vote. That worked. Thank you. Record it. Motion carries. Under old witness, final plat review for Stevens Valley, Section Six, containing seventy-seven lots on twenty-three point seven-six acres in the ninth voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A preliminary plat for this section of the development was approved at the February 2019 meeting. The applicant is now requesting final plat approval for Section Six of the development, which includes seventy-seven lots and approximately four point three acres of open space. Turn lane improvements at the intersection of Sneed Road and Timberline Drive, which were required in association with this section of the development as stipulated in the traffic impact study, have been completed in accordance with the approved plans. Staff recommends approval of the final plat with the following conditions. Number one, establishment of a performance bond for roads drainage and erosion control in the amount of nine hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. This is a reduced amount based on work completed. Number two, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements in favor of Harpeth Valley Utilities Districts in the amount of one hundred thousand two hundred and five dollars and forty cents. Number three, establishment of a performance bond for sewer improvements in favor of Harpeth Valley Utilities District in the amount of ninety-one thousand eight hundred and three dollars and fifty-two cents. Number four, the HOA documents must be submitted with the final plat and must be recorded concurrently with the recording of the final plat. Number five, execution of a performance agreements for the above referenced sureties. Number six, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement, submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements, and associated notes affixed to the plat. And number seven, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinance System prior to signature and recording of
Questions of staff? Comments? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Item twelve, final plat review revised for Stone Valley Large Lot Easement containing four lots on thirty-six point five-six acres located off Lewisburg Pike in the second voting district. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the subject property is approximately thirty-seven acres in size and is located off Lewisburg Pike, approximately one-third mile north of Bethesda, or one-quarter mile north of Bethesda Duplex Road. The applicant is requesting approval of a revised large lot easement subdivision in order to reduce the number of lots to four off an existing fifty-foot ingress egress utilities easement. The site slopes steadily upward from the road to the back of the property. Steeper slopes are located toward the front and in the rear of the property. There are also several streams running through the property. The property is open in the front and heavily wooded in the back and along the southern tier. All zoning ordinance requirements, including those regarding the protection of natural resources, have been met. The applicant is proposing individual septic systems for the lots, and the Williamson County Department of Sewage Disposal Management has approved the request. Water will be provided by the HB and TS Utility District. As no fire hydrants are proposed, and as none are currently located within five hundred feet of the building envelopes, the building envelopes have been separated by two hundred feet. The plat is in order, and staff recommends approval subject to the following. Number one, the posting of a performance bond in the amount of seventy-nine thousand dollars for water improvements as specified by HB and TS Utility District. And number two, driveway and drainage infrastructure must be complete prior to issuance of building permits.
Thank you, sir. Questions of staff? Thoughts? Comments? Motion made and seconded. Seconded. Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item thirteen, non-residential site plans, non-residential site plan review for Terra Vista Subdivision Non-Traditional Wastewater Treatment and Disposal System, revised in accordance with reprimand and court order on one hundred and thirty point five-three acres located off Long Lane in the twelfth voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am reading from a revised report that was placed on your desks before you. A revised site plan for this use was approved at the May 2018 meeting. In July 2018, the owners of the adjacent property filed a lawsuit challenging the Planning Commission's action. On September 23rd, 2019, Chancellor Woodruff issued a memorandum and order in the case confirming the Planning Commission's action in all but one matter. The court found that a one-hundred-foot open space strip around the perimeter of the development, which had been adopted as an amendment to the zoning ordinance in November of 2017, should have been applied to the wastewater system components as well as the concept plan for the subdivision. The court remanded the concept plan, which it opined included wastewater components back to the Planning Commission to consider consistent with the court order. In accordance with the remand and court order, the applicant has submitted a revised site plan for this use, which includes the required one-hundred-foot open space strip. The proposed system will serve the Terra Vista development, for which a revised concept plan appears as item fourteen on this agenda. Subject property totals approximately one hundred and thirty acres in size, and approximately nine acres of the site will be utilized for the proposed non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system, which includes the land application area, treatment facility, and storage pond. The proposed system will utilize recirculating sand filter technology to treat wastewater generated by the proposed subdivision. A certificate of convenience and necessity has been approved by the Tennessee Regulatory Authority, and a revised draft state operating permit has been issued by the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. A design development report, as well as a revised detailed soils investigation report, were prepared by the applicant and submitted to the county. County's wastewater consultant has reviewed those reports and has concluded that all zoning ordinance requirements related to non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal systems has been met. The adjoining property owners had previously raised concerns regarding the potential of wastewater disposal system to impact ground and surface water in the vicinity. As a result, staff recommended in May of 2019, and again here, that the wastewater operator be required to install, maintain, and report findings from various monitoring wells and surface water sampling locations in order to evaluate the effect of the disposal system on groundwater and surface water in the area immediately surrounding the disposal fields. A monitoring plan should be developed by the wastewater operator in concert with TDEC, and data from the monitoring locations should be provided to the TDEC along with their monthly operating reports. Conceptual layout for the proposed subdivision, which depicts ninety-nine lots, is shown on Sheets C2 and C2.1 of the site plan packet. It is staff's opinion that the combination of distance, topography, and existing vegetation will serve to adequately screen the treatment system from adjacent properties. The landscaping plan has been submitted and approved. Subsequent to the initial drafting of this report, and in response to a concern raised by a consultant representing an adjacent property owner, the county's wastewater consultant recommended that the applicant provide either a more robust UV disinfection system or take steps to reduce the TSS effluent concentration on the sand filter. In response, the applicant is proposing to install a larger Sanitron system, which will provide more than the necessary level of UV disinfection. County's wastewater consultant has reviewed and agrees with the applicant's proposal. It should be noted that levels of UV disinfection is not under the county's regulatory authority, but rather TDEC's. However, because it was noted, staff has added a condition of approval relative to the topic. Staff has reviewed the site plan and finds it complies with the remand and court order. As such, staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Number one, prior to submittal of a preliminary plat for the first phase of the proposed subdivision, the UV specifications outlined in the DDR shall be revised to include the larger Sanitron S500C system that is capable of providing more than necessary level of UV disinfection, and that the applicant provide evidence that TDEC has approved the revised system. Number two, prior to final plat submittal for the first section of the proposed subdivision, a zoning certificate must be obtained for the completed treatment and disposal system. Prior to issuance of the zoning certificate, the applicant shall provide the following. A, a monitoring plan approved by TDEC showing the location of monitoring wells and surface water sampling locations to assess the impact of the wastewater disposal system on ground and surface water in the areas surrounding the disposal fields. B, proof that any required Class V injection well permits have been issued by TDEC. C, a letter from TDEC indicating that the non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system was installed and is functioning. D, as-built drawings showing the location of all system components, as well as the monitoring wells as shown on the monitoring plan approved by TDEC, and a sealed certification letter from the design engineer indicating that said system and monitoring components were constructed in accordance with the approved construction plans and specifications. E, a letter from the owner slash utility provider indicating that it has accepted said system and is currently operating same. F, posting of a performance bond in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for said system as specified by the county's wastewater consultant. And G, the execution of a performance agreement for the above referenced surety. And finally, number three, data from the monitoring wells and surface water sampling locations must be submitted to TDEC along with monthly operating reports. Mr. Chairman, one additional items. There is correspondence regarding this item on your desks in front of you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Questions of staff? Comments? Anyone? Motion made and seconded. Prepare to vote. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Item fourteen, concept plan review for Terra Vista Subdivision, revised in accordance with a reprimand and court order containing ninety-nine lots on one hundred and thirty point five-three acres located off Long Lane in the twelfth voting district. This is a public hearing item. For those in the audience that wish to speak, that have signed up, you will have three minutes to make your comments. When you see me raise my hand, your time has expired. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am reading from a revised report that was placed on your desks in front of you. A concept plan for this development, which contained one hundred and fifteen lots, was approved at the May 2018 meeting. In July 2018, the owners of an adjacent property filed a lawsuit challenging the Planning Commission's action. On September 23rd, 2019, Chancellor Woodruff issued a memorandum and order in the case confirming the Planning Commission's action in all but one matter. The court found that a one-hundred-foot open space strip around the perimeter of the development, which had been adopted as an amendment to the zoning ordinance in November 2017, should have been applied to the wastewater system components as well as the concept plan for the subdivision. The court remanded the concept plan, which it opined included the wastewater components back to the Planning Commission to consider consistent with the court order. In accordance with the remand and court order, the applicant has submitted a revised concept plan, which includes the required one-hundred-foot open space strip. Subject property totals approximately one hundred and thirty acres in size and is located on Long Lane, approximately one-half mile south of Carruthers Parkway. Property consists of rolling hills and steep slopes, which are predominantly located in the southern and western portions of the site. Natural resources on the property include woodlands, moderate, and steep slopes and streams. Approximately fifty-four percent of the site is covered in tree canopy. The natural resource protection standards of the zoning ordinance have been met. The proposed development has been revised to include the one-hundred-foot open space strip around the perimeter of the development, including the wastewater system components. As a result of these changes, the development now consists of ninety-nine lots, which range in size from ten thousand five hundred square feet to just over one acre. Additionally, because the development now consists of fewer than one hundred lots, a single entrance is proposed, and the second entrance, which has been shown on previous concept plan, has been eliminated. Approximately sixty-five percent of the site will be preserved as open space. Approximately nine acres of the site will be utilized for the non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system, which appeared as item thirteen on this agenda, and includes the land application area, treatment facility, and storage pond. Proposed system will utilize a recirculating sand filter technology to treat wastewater generated by the proposed subdivision. A certificate of convenience and necessity has been approved by the Tennessee Regulatory Authority, and a revised state operating permit has been issued by the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. A design development report, as well as a revised detailed soils investigation report, were prepared by the applicant and submitted to the county. County's wastewater consultant has reviewed this report and has concluded that all zoning ordinance requirements related to non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal systems have been met. The adjoining property owners had previously raised concerns regarding the potential of the wastewater disposal system to impact ground and surface water in the vicinity. As a result, staff recommended in May 2019, and again here, that the wastewater operator be required to install, maintain, and report findings from various monitoring wells and surface water sampling locations in order to evaluate the effect of the disposal systems on groundwater and surface water in the area immediately surrounding the disposal fields. A monitoring plan should be developed by the wastewater operator in concert with TDEC, and data from the monitoring locations should be provided to the TDEC along with their monthly operating reports. It is staff's opinion that the combination of distance, topography, and existing vegetation will serve to adequately screen the treatment system from adjacent properties. A landscaping plan for the non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system has been submitted and approved. This property is subject to the traffic shed methodology as outlined in Article nineteen of the zoning ordinance. Traffic shed analysis indicated that the proposed number of lots is within acceptable limits based on the capacity of existing roadways. Because this development will generate fifty or more peak hour trips, the applicant was required to provide an intersection analysis, which includes an evaluation as to the necessity of turn lanes into the development. In light of the elimination of one entrance, staff required the applicant to revise the intersection analysis using current traffic figures. The revised intersection analysis indicated that turn lanes are not warranted based on projected traffic volumes. County Highway Superintendent and Engineer for the Highway Department reviewed the intersection analysis and has concurred with the findings contained therein. However, despite not being warranted, the applicant has agreed to install a right-turn deceleration lane at the entrance to the development. This deceleration lane is shown on the concept plan and will be incorporated into the conditions of approval for the development. Water services will be provided by Millcrofton Utility District. Wastewater will be handled via a non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system, which appeared on this agenda as item thirteen and is contained in the revised concept plan. It should be noted that once detailed construction and engineering plans are prepared in conjunction with the submittal of a preliminary plat, changes to the layout, including the potential for a reduction of lots, may be necessary. A landscaping plan for the conservation subdivision will also be required. Subsequent to the initial drafting of this report, and in response to concerns raised by a consultant representing an adjacent property owner, county's wastewater consultant recommended that the applicant provide either a more robust UV disinfection system or take steps to reduce the TSS effluent concentration on the sand filter. The applicant is proposing to install a larger Sanitron system, which will provide more than the necessary level of UV disinfection. County's wastewater consultant has reviewed and agreed with the applicant's proposal. Should be noted that the levels of UV disinfection is not under the county's regulatory authority, but rather TDEC's. However, because it was noted, staff has added condition of approval relative to this topic. Staff has reviewed the concept plan and finds it complies with the remand and court order. Additionally, staff has reviewed the revised concept plan relative to the modifications that have been made to accommodate the one-hundred-foot open space strip and finds that it complies with all applicable regulations. Therefore, provided that item thirteen on this agenda is approved, staff recommends approval of the concept plan with the following conditions. Preliminary plat must address the following. Number one, prior to the submittal of a preliminary plat, the UV specifications outlined in the DDR shall be revised to include the larger Sanitron S500C system that is capable of providing more than the necessary level of UV disinfection, and that the applicant provide evidence that TDEC has approved the revised system. Submission of roads drainage and erosion control plans for review and approval by the county engineer. Such shall include off-site improvements, which must be approved by the county highway department. Number three, submission of water plans for review and approval by Millcrofton Utility District. Number four, submission of the applicable construction plans for required wastewater treatment and disposal systems to TDEC, county's consultant, and staff. Final plat must address the following. Number one, prior to final plat submittal for the first section of the development, off-site roadway improvements must be completed to the satisfaction of the county highway superintendent. Number two, prior to final plat submittal for the first section of the proposed subdivision, zoning certificate must be obtained for the completed treatment and disposal system. Prior to issuance of the zoning certificate, the applicant shall provide the following. A, a monitoring plan approved by TDEC showing the location of monitoring wells and surface water sampling locations to assess the impact of wastewater disposal system on ground and surface water in the areas surrounding the disposal fields. B, proof that any Class V injection well permits have been issued by TDEC. C, a letter from TDEC indicating that said system to serve this development was installed and is functioning. D, as-built drawings showing the location of all system components, as well as monitoring wells as shown on the monitoring plan approved by TDEC, and a sealed certification letter from the design engineer indicating that said system and monitoring components were constructed in accordance with the approved construction plans and specifications. E, a letter from the owner slash utility provider indicating that it has accepted said system to serve this development and is currently operating same. F, posting of a performance bond in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for said system as specified by the county's wastewater consultant. And G, execution of a performance agreement for the above referenced surety. Number three, data from the monitoring wells and surface water sampling locations must be submitted to TDEC along with monthly operating reports. Four, proof that any required Class V injection well permits have been issued by TDEC. Five, prior to submittal of the first preliminary plat for this subdivision, the well located on-site shall be abandoned and capped, and evidence from the appropriate state regulatory authority shall be provided. Number six, the HOA documents must be submitted with the final plats, and the approved HOA documents must be recorded concurrently with the recording of the final plat. Number seven, establishment of performance bonds for roads drainage and erosion control. Number eight, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements in favor of Millcrofton Utility District. Number nine, establishment of a performance bond for the wastewater collection system. Number ten, execution of performance agreements for the above referenced sureties. Number eleven, submission of landscaping plans and establishment of a performance bond for landscaping. Number twelve, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And number thirteen, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinance System prior to signature and recording of the plat. Mr. Chairman, one additional item. We do have correspondence regarding this item on your desk in front of you.
Thank you, sir. We will open the public hearing at this time. I would remind you that I would ask you, I should say, that you stick to the agenda item before you and not stray off in various other directions. The first speaker is Mr. John Murphy.
Hi there. Thank you, guys, so much for coming. So I live just right up the road from the development. You know, I know as someone who's lived in Franklin my whole life, keeping Franklin, Franklin is a huge part of what I want, and keeping that rural relevancy, that safety in our infrastructure. One of the things that stuck out to me in the study that the developers had in 2017 was that traffic would only increase by two percent. What they found out two years later in 2019 with a new study was that it increased by eighty-eight percent. That's not taking into account the new refuge counseling center that's being put in on Long Lane, or the dozens and dozens of houses that have been added but are not yet habitated in, and the new school. So this is, we're not really sure how big of a traffic increase there is right now, but it seems huge and that we need to take another study. As far as the immediate area of the development, I really encourage you all that we need to suggest to put in a left turn lane going into it to expand the road. This is a double-blind drive hill. I've been driving up and around it for twenty years, this area. The, just around the hill, around this area, it is very curvy, very dangerous. I've seen and experienced multiple accidents around. I've seen and experienced multiple accidents around, and it's very serious. This is the safety of Long Lane and the Franklin citizens. I invite you to come and sit on my porch and experience what the interstate-level traffic, the sound of Long Lane, it's significant. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. David Murphy?
Thank y'all for letting us come down here and talk. I'm one of the adjacent farm owners, and I just, I had a little speech I was gonna read, but it just, it seems like it's not gonna be worth doing it, but I just want to tell you the, the karst features in our farm. I live at 4470 Long Lane across, across the street. My property is downhill, and...
Where they're gonna put that, where they're gonna put that proposed non-traditional...
Why don't you stay at the, Mike, we can hear you better.
Where they're gonna, where they're gonna put that proposed non-traditional septic system is up on top of a hill. I mean, if you come out there and look and see where they're gonna put that, it's ridiculous. I mean, I've got, I've got sinkholes, I got, I've got sinkholes out there you could lose a four-wheeler in. I dodge them on my tractor when I'm bush hogging all the time. I mean, it's crazy. It's across the street from Long Lane. They're gonna put that up on top of a hill, and when we get this rain, yeah, I'm gonna be under three. When, when, when we get this rain, like we've gotten this weekend, where you think that water's gonna go? I mean, they're gonna put, they're gonna put a septic pond up there, but with this water, it's gonna come right down on the Vedens. It's gonna come right down into their creek, it's gonna come into our pond, which is gonna turn into a septic tank. I'm not against some building, I'm not against putting houses up there, I'm all for progress, but that, that septic system's not gonna work. I mean, it's, it's, the water, it's porous, the soil is porous. It's gonna go right down, and it's gonna go over the top, and it's gonna be a mess. And the traffic situation is terrible. I mean, I tried, I tried to put a driveway up there years ago, and the county wouldn't let me put a driveway going by Ned Vaden's house because it's, it's a dangerous hill. It's a blind hill, but you know, now it's okay, we're gonna put a, we're gonna put a subdivision over there. So, thank y'all, I hope you, I hope you get our back on this because this is gonna be a messy little situation when that pond overflows and all that septic stuff goes down into the Little Harpeth River eventually. Thank y'all.
Donna Murphy?
Well, you've heard from my son and my husband, and so you know that I too live on land adjacent or across the street from the proposed Terra Vista subdivision. And you've heard our concerns about the traffic, the danger of the road, how narrow it is, its curves, hills, blind spots, and its need for a turning lane. You've heard about, you know, the environmental damage, the soil erosion, the impact of the water quality on our wells, our streams, and our ponds, from both the leach fields and storm runoff. I know that you need legal reasons to oppose this development in its current form. I do believe the traffic issues needs to be readdressed. I do believe we need a dye test to be done. That way, the proposed monitoring system that's after the fact, what good will that do? We who use our wells and our, our ponds and our stream, what good will it do afterwards? These alone are enough reasons. The safety for the community and the relationship to surrounding parcels is part of the current land use plan that this body relies on for its legal determinations. This is all listed in the 20, the 200, I'm sorry, the 2007 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. It's important to note that our area is outside the urban growth boundaries and is considered rural and part of the conservation subdivisions, where high-density subdivisions aren't allowed. The exception to this is if the subdivision plan has conservative-minded designs. These designs would include hiking trails, 70% open spaces, preservations of wetlands, et cetera. The Terra Vista proposal has absolutely no conservative design elements. Everyone in the community is concerned about preserving the quality of life and the green space in Williamson County. The community gave its feedback, the Williamson County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, Williamson 2040, that everyone is, it's a proposal at this point, and hopefully will be adopted. But I ask you, what good are all these comprehensive land use plans if we fail our community by not following them? Please don't let developers do an end run around the 2007 plan that was meant to protect farms and rural areas like ours. Vote no on the Terra Vista subdivision plan in its current form. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. I know y'all are tired of seeing us. We're still concerned, obviously, we're still concerned, and it gets, I hate to make it personal, but we, we do see a problem with the water coming through there. It's just the way the land lays, it's just, it all runs, 70% of those, of that water is coming right towards us, storm water and septic water. And we're really not against houses, I mean, we just want the water to go somewhere else. It's gonna affect us, it's gonna affect our neighbors, and straight down to the Harpeth, it's not far down there. So, I know there's a detention pond, couple of them, one of them's higher up, but the one that's closer to it's gotta take up the water from, I counted up 65 units, and the rooftops and the asphalt, it's gonna be a lot of water. I wish you could come out there and look at that drainage ditch right now, it's, it's running, running like a river. But when you add all that concrete and asphalt and shingles to the place, it's gonna be worse, and it's nowhere for it to go. And I know they've got studies saying it's, they've got it taken care of, but we also have got some people that say it's not going away. So, I'll be brief, we just want you to consider changes or something to stop, stop all that water effluent coming through there. And after the fact, if they test them after, after a build, it's, what are you gonna do about it? What does that leave us? So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mike Vaden?
Good evening. Our farm, as you hear, lays to the east of this proposed development on Long Lane, and Long Lane is really not very long, it's only four miles, and there are three 90-degree turns and five hills in this little four-mile section. There have been numerous accidents on it, there're gonna be a lot more probably, the traffic is horrendous. We can't understand how a study shows only 2% growth per year over the last five years when Lad Park has a 62% growth in houses there, and these people aren't riding bicycles that live in Lad Park, so something's amiss there. And this traffic study they did was before Creekside Elementary came open and the new kind of a hospital, I think, that they're putting out there. We are concerned about the stormwater runoff, and when they take down all of those old growth trees to build houses, put driveways and streets in, it's really gonna flood our farm, and we are downhill, downstream, whatever, from, from this development. And the development is, is going to be put on, they call it not-so-high-density because there's 99 houses on 130 acres, but only, there's only about 50 or 60 acres that they're gonna build on, the rest of it's gonna be quarter-acre lots. The land use plan of 2007 adopted by the Planning Commission says urban and suburban growth will be discouraged in rural areas that do not have sufficient services, and this area does not have sufficient services. The new plan that's supposed to be adopted, or is in draft form now, says agriculture and equestrian uses are encouraged to continue in rural areas. This is not what's being encouraged. Stream, it also states that stream corridors, woodlands, hillsides shall be preserved. We're not preserving anything out there, they're tearing it down. This subdivision should not be built at this time because we don't have the infrastructure out there that will support it. Thank you.
Neilia, I think, Vaden, is that correct?
Thank you, and good evening to all of you. My name is Neilia Vaden. A little redundancy here, but you've already heard that we are actually downhill from the proposed development, and we have a stream below the development that gets a good quantity of water flowing through it after a heavy rain. Comes from the Kelly property, where the plans for the 99 houses are drawn. Streams coming from that land feed into our pond. There is no question that we are downhill of what could be the sewage sand filtration system. Water from this development will affect our streams and pond, and I just did a little calculation. If there are 99 houses with four members family to each house, I called Mill Crofton to get this statistic. A four-member family house will produce 792,000 gallons of water per month. That's a little over 26,000 gallons of water a day. That's a lot of water, and we know with past rains what water can do. There are nearby wells possibly affected by this wastewater. We drink from a well, and we have for 47 years. My husband has lived on this farm all of his life, and he has never had an issue with foul water contamination. You can see our concern with our well water. The time to deal with this issue is now before the problems start. I would suggest that a dye study be done so that we can see the karst features and the seepage into nearby and underground waterways that will affect us and our neighbors. I don't feel like this is an unreasonable request. We are asking the Planning Commission to address these concerns before the community is adversely affected. Another problem is I see that with 99 houses, there could possibly be 200 more cars on Long Lane. Five hills have already been, you've already heard that. Three significant nearly 90-degree curves are on Long Lane. It is a much-used road for three county schools, it's a thoroughfare for three county schools. I would like those who live in the rural part of our counties, most of us, I believe, would like to keep it that way, and we're asking this Planning Commission to do so. It affects a lot of people, not just us. We're next doors to the development, but it does affect a lot of people. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
I live at 4492 Long Lane, which is just over, over the hill and to the east a little bit of this proposed development, and my primary concerns relate to the disposal of the wastewater from the facility. As has been previously said, there's a lot of karst in the region. In reading the proposed changes, there are no specifics in the plan. The developer will propose a plan to TDEC, and that will be negotiated, but at this time, I don't see that there's any specifics anywhere. Is it going to be monitoring monthly? Is it gonna be quarterly? Are they, what's gonna happen? They've got $120,000 bond here, but what is the purpose of that bond? Just to renovate the treatment system if it has issues? If the Murphy's Pond gets contaminated and full of moss and contaminants from this? Are they going to clean that up? You know, it's, it doesn't seem that this has been well thought out, and I believe that further studies are necessary prior to implementing this plan. Thank you.
Pass off the lever. I'm sorry, you can have written materials submitted after Monday at noon?
Oh, okay.
After the meeting? No, written materials had to have been submitted by Monday at noon of this week, so you can make the...
Right, I asked before I was to hand them out, and...
Okay. That would violate the bylaws, but you're welcome to present verbally what the information says.
Okay, we'll do it. Okay, I'm here to represent the Harpeth River Conservancy for this project, and Jim Redvine had sent this to the commission, but it didn't get into the packet, so on behalf of them and their 2,000 members, I'm here to make their oppositions known on the proposed applications for this project. The applications seem to embody a headlong rush to obtain approval without compliance with applicable laws and regulations, thus without adequate consideration of the impacts of the proposed project. They fall short of required standards in at least three different areas. The first being, it was significantly increased the sediment and stormwater contamination in the affected segment of the Harpeth River. The Planning Department should not grant approval for a development that will further degrade the Harpeth River. This segment of the river, of the river is listed on the state's 303D listed as impaired. It does not meet Tennessee State Water Quality Standards for, among other things, sedimentation and phosphorus contamination. The, two, the applications contain several important misrepresentations. The application is required to show streams that are within one mile of the development. Exhibit 1.3A in your packet, the revised design development report in accordance with the remand in the court order does not include any references to the Harpeth River, which is clearly within one mile. Such admissions significantly hinder the ability of the planning members here, the commission, and other policymakers to properly judge the potential impact of the Harpeth River and surrounding land. Also, misrepresentation that there is no karst geog, geologic, geologically in the area, geology in the area. See overall plan dated 12/20/2019 and letter dated March 27, 2018. Karst geology underlies almost all of the Tennessee, with many of its features not visible on the surface. Karst geography can facilitate the movement of pollutants from any area to the river. Material misrepresentation is an application, in an application are grounds for denial of the applicant permit, and the Planning Commission must deny the application on these grounds. The proposal allows, three, the proposal allows the developer to expand the wastewater system beyond the 99 houses currently contemplated within further, without further governmental approvals. See the letter of understanding dated 4/27/2017 in your packet.
Ma'am.
Neither, neither of the parties in this letter have the authority to make such a commitment. It is an improper delegation of governmental authority to a private self-interested party. The agreement should be disapproval on these grounds. And in just closing, there are significant issues with this application that appears to show that disregarded the importance of the application of the rules with which they are supported, are supposed to comply. So as proposed, the applicant should be rejected, and the developer should be required to comply with all applicable laws and regulations before permission is granted. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
John Korn?
Good evening. Thank you for letting us speak for this. My name is John Michael Korn. I'm the president of an environmental consulting firm. I'm here for the Vedens. I have been to the Vedens' property and have reviewed the proposed development documents. There are still multiple items that I'm concerned with, this latest revision. By design, the wastewater treatment system will contribute more nitrogen and phosphorus to the land in this area, as well as adding pharmaceuticals and other things that aren't there now, just by default of people, the wastewater treatment system. The wastewater treatment system is not designed to treat pharmaceuticals, and they're very difficult to treat anyways, but you know, that is an issue and that, those materials will move through the drip field and then into the local water bodies, including the neighboring Murphy's and the Vedens. You know, their drinking water supplies in jeopardy in the springs. That their water for the ponds, for the livestock is, you know, they depend upon those things. The regional geology in the description there does not address site-specific known karst geology. There is a depression that the step field is built around that is typical of what would be found as karst geology in middle Tennessee and Williamson County. The fact that it's not right there at the drip field is not really that important. It's, you know, it's close enough where it's a concern. There is a spring on the hill, on the same hill. So this water is coming from that spring, you know, water coming from that spring is coming from an area, presumably this hill. So adding more water and specifically treated sewage is not in the interest of the Vedens. So I would recommend, you know, that a tracer study be done just to prove that the water is not going to affect the ponds or the Vedens' drinking water or the Murphy's wells, so. In addition to that, with the addition of this drip field, you'll have additional stormwater now running off because what would have gone into the grounds is being replaced by the sewage. So that drains mainly to the Vedens' property, and that increased drainage will result in additional siltation, and that will, you know, significantly reduce the life expectancy of their pond in existence that they use, so. Lastly, the packet does include one to two-foot contour surveys. I couldn't tell, but it looks like it only says the spot measurements. That really hasn't done it. It looks like the data are extrapolated from spot measurements. So the location of the recirculating sand filter, the emergency ponds on the side of a hill is a concern, and that really should be properly surveyed. And really, all of the property that is under development should be properly surveyed to meet the one-to-two-foot contours, so. Right, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Fister?
I'm Alan Fister. I'm the attorney for the Vedens. And for the record, note my objection that my engineer and I have not been allowed to speak more than three minutes. And also note our objection of not combining these two agenda items, 13 and 14. They should be considered as one because they're hand and glove. But I'm raised three children in Williamson County, and I appreciate you serving as planning commissioners to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. We don't put 12 lawyers up here. We don't put 12 engineering professors up here. We put you up here because we think that you have the life experience and the common sense to look at plans and see if they are properly protecting and are best protecting the citizens of Williamson County. And you're to use your independent judgment and your common sense and not rubber-stamp planning staff recommendations, but look at the evidence and weigh the evidence. And the court decision that just came out recently regarding this makes it clear that if there's any material evidence that you've weighed, and you make a decision, the court is going to defer to that decision. What does that mean? It means that our engineering reports should be given a lot of weight, and if you decide that our points are well taken, then the court's going to defer to your judgment. And you're not going to be overturned because you didn't adopt the planning staff recommendation or because of the developer wind is done. The court will not second-guess you when there's any material evidence to support your decision. So please remember, so what are the common sense issues I want to talk about? I want to talk about three of them. My time is limited. First of all, what does common sense tell you about the traffic out there? Common sense tells you that a left-hand turn lane is badly needed here. The traffic study submitted by the developer says their estimated growth rate of 2.3% in this area. Does your common sense, does your horse sense tell you that this area of the county is growing only by 2.3%? Look at the study itself. I looked at the tube count going westbound where people are returning in the afternoon from Creekside Elementary and from Page High School. The tube count from the one that did two years ago has increased by 88%. That's over 40% a year. It's gone from 40 on the westbound approach after school to 75, 40 to 75 in two years. Now, that's not a 2.3% growth rate, is it? This study shows you, you've got a thousand, over a thousand daily trips in and out of the subdivision. This after-school afternoon peak, you've got 63 cars entering the subdivision with no left-hand turn lane. Common sense says you can require a left-hand turn lane here, and this common sense judgment may save a life or two or prevent serious injury. The second thing I want to mention is the dye test. Common sense says a dye test should be taken out here because we have conflicting evidence from the geologists from both sides. A dye test is relatively inexpensive, and this commission could ask the developer, require the developer to do this to see what's going to happen out there, is there karst, and what's going to happen with this sewage. The third thing to wrap up is the conservation subdivision they're traveling under has no conservation elements. The 2007 land use plan says build-in hiking suggests. Build-in hiking trails suggest protecting wetlands, for example, or having agricultural activities or having ponds. There's no conservation elements built into this plan, so you can require the developer to go back and build in some conservation environmental aspects into this conservation subdivision. So, common sense says should be a left-hand turn lane. Common sense says the developer should do a dye test. Common sense says developers should build in some environmentally sound conservation elements into this plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Betsy Hester?
Hello, and thank you. I'm Betsy Hester. I'm one of the county commissioners. I represent District Two. And I appreciate Mr. Holmes' work done on this. It was very complete. However, I do disagree with certain things. It's interesting to know that if the new Town and Country proposal, part of Williamson 2040, if it is adopted, and that's a big if, only 26 homes would be approved for this particular property. That would be one home per five acres. That would be under the Town and Country proposal. And I have a problem with the ultraviolet portion of this wastewater system. Because it's approved by TDEC, our regulations in Williamson County are more stringent than TDEC, and they are more stringent for a reason. Because of our topography, our hills, and because of our car, our clay property. I don't live on Long Lane, but I have traveled Long Lane many a year because of taking my children to school at Page High and Page Middle. And I know for a fact that the parents from Lad Park do not put their children on a bus, and they do not carpool. They drive their children to school. So that means there are probably at least 200 additional cars on Long Lane going east in the morning and going west in the afternoon, not to mention the traffic that we have from out of the county. I believe another study should be done on traffic before this is approved. I do agree with the turn lane being done off of Long Lane. And I don't think that culpability should end with a property line. If the wells on Long Lane and the farm ponds are poisoned by wastewater systems, I don't think that the landowners should have to put in city water out of their own pockets. It's expensive. Mill Crofton doesn't have a line directly out to Long Lane, to my knowledge, goes to go to the hill, but not to Long Lane. That costs a lot of money. I believe there should be an escrow account established for wastewater poisoning, possible wastewater poisoning. And that being said, of course, the dye study should be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. That's our last speaker. We'll close the public hearing at this time. Commission for discussion, the proposal before you. Any questions, comments, or thoughts? Ma'am? Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those of us who were not here when this first came through the planning commission, I just do have a couple of questions, if I may. Could somebody explain to me, maybe, I don't know if our consultant is here, about the dye study option, why that could or could not be performed? Just so we can understand that, and just as a request that was made.
Staff?
Well, the wastewater consultant has reviewed the document. He's not here tonight, but I'm not sure, and Christie could weigh in here. I'm not sure that the planning commission would even have the authority to require a dye test. And one of the things that I'd like to point out, I think maybe everyone knows it, but maybe they don't. You know, we're not talking about untreated wastewater in these areas. We're talking about water that has been treated to a high standard required by TDEC. They're the oversight board here. And so, you know, the drip fields would be loaded with already treated, already, you know, clean wastewater. So those are, I guess those are the points that I would make in response to that question.
Thank you. Mike, could you also address for me the left-turn lane question? Because, you know, I will say this, I've been talking to a lot of constituents on our country roads. We have really good people. I know that the developer used a good firm on the traffic study. But I'm just learning that nobody knows a road like the people who travel those roads, day in, day out. We have, I was there at the ribbon-cutting for Creekside Elementary. We just have a lot more activity. Was it discussed by staff at all, maybe to consider a left-turn lane besides the right, or?
So any development that has 50 or more peak hour trips, which this one does, is required to do what we call an intersection analysis. So what that means is that any entrance point has to be evaluated for a number of things, one of which is whether there's a warrant met for either a left-turn or a right-turn lane. And so one was done back in 2018 with the initial submittal. And because they've reduced the number of lots in this submittal, they are proposing one entrance instead of two. And so we asked them, we required them, to redo that study using current figures, and they've done that. So they submitted a intersection study that included a warrant in terms of whether the left-turn lane or right-turn lane are needed based on the volumes out there. And that study came back that neither a left-turn lane nor a right-turn deceleration lane was required. We sent that study over to the highway department, and so it was reviewed by the county's highway superintendent, as well as the engineer that represents them, and they concurred with those findings. So the warrant doesn't require those turn lanes. We did ask the developer to at least put in a right-turn lane, which they agreed to do. And I guess that's the history of that particular issue.
So Mike, would we be overstepping our authority if we requested a left-turn lane at this point?
I think you can always request something like that.
But it's not necessarily based on this study. I got you. Thanks.
Is the applicant, applicant's rep here? Why don't you come to the podium in case you have a question? I won't have to chase you down. Introduce yourself, please, sir.
Presenting the applicant, and anything you want to have substance, I will not be able to answer.
Well, you're not much use, Mr. Eccles. Is the engineer for the...
Yes, sir. They're here, sir.
Well, bring him up there and let him hold your hand or whatever.
All right.
In case we have a question, we don't need to wait on you to... All right, other comments, questions from the commission? Robin?
Yes, can I question what Beth was saying about the left-turn signal? And I've heard everyone talk about it. I drive along Lane, not daily, but a lot because I live out off Arno Road, so I'm very familiar with the road, and I'm very familiar with the hills and the curves and exactly where it is. So I was really surprised that there wasn't a left-turn lane, even with the reduction of just the one entrance, because when you come around the sharp curve, if you're coming from like the Ag Center, Lad Park, you come in a couple of sharp curves and you kind of go down the hill. This property's on the right, and you literally kind of go up the hill. So I'm very, very surprised there wasn't a left-hand turn going in just because of the amount of cars that do and future will travel it. So Mike was talking about the recent study on it with the highway commission. Like, was that, when was that? I don't know if I recall what you were just talking about. Is that...
Yeah, they revised the intersection analysis just within the past few months.
Okay. Yeah, because that would be a concern, just because I live out there and I know the road. So that seemed to be a big concern with the residents around.
Other comments? Did you have a question, Robin, or just comment?
It's my comment about it.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Sammy?
So we're putting in a right-turn lane headed eastbound. So as you're leaving the Ag Center and going east, you're putting in a right-turn lane. A lot of the comments were about a left-turn lane for westbound traveling traffic. And when you're heading eastbound, you are going upgrade based on the contours that I see on the plans. I realize it would be a little more cost, but would the applicant consider taking, even taking the right-turn lane out if staff felt like that, but making it a left-turn lane? So essentially, you would have a right, a through lane to the south side of the road and allow through traffic to be more on the property of this tract of land, and then provide that left-turn lane for that west, left, for that westbound traveling traffic. Would that be considered?
Choose one.
Tim Turner, T-Square Engineering. I believe if we do not have to acquire, if we do away with the decelerating lane, then we would have enough room to do something like that. The problem, if we keep the decelerating lane and then put the left-turn lane, then I'm not sure we have enough right-of-way there to do that. But I think, I think the client is...
Let me make, let me make an overall comment. And I'll quote the county attorney in terms of what we're doing here tonight. As she said, "The only issue before the planning commission is whether the 100-foot open space strip has been properly applied to the remanded revised site plan, and if any changes to the revised site plan resulting from applying this 100-foot open space strip in accordance with the remand meets the applicable regulations." I'm not cutting off any discussion, but I just want to focus the discussion on what is before. These other issues were addressed in 2018, resolved back then. They were addressed by the court in a prolonged legal battle, and the court did not provide the relief requested. And so while we're happy to discuss these things, I just want to make sure that the commission is focused on, and understanding that the wastewater plan has already been approved. We're really just talking about the concept plan. And I'm not trying to foreclose any questions or discussion, but I just want to make sure that that is the focus.
I'm going to comment on that, and I was about two seconds away from making that same speech. I'm not going to cut off the discussion of our commission if that's what they choose to do, but they also understand that the only thing on this agenda is the 100-foot boundary and its attendant changes. boundary and its attendant changes to that plan. So, I appreciate your comments, so... Sammy, go ahead. Mr. Fisher, sit down.
When our last approval had two entrances, correct?
Correct.
What improvements were we doing, asking them to do to Long Lane at that point?
Just the right turn deceleration lane.
Okay.
On one of the entrances.
Okay.
Sammy, to clarify what Tim said earlier, the issue isn't really with the whole property boundary. We're going to be getting into our eastern property boundary if we're trying to put that left turn lane and come in west. The right of way out on Long Lane doesn't look like it's there to be able to get it in on that side of the entrance. And that's the question that we're all talking about back here. So, that's why the decelerate lane is opposed to the westbound left turn lane.
I'm sorry, we just identified...
Sorry. Blake Turner, T-Square Engineering.
For the record, I've got to say that that's not, this site plan has substantially changed, which was before the court. So, all issues are before this commission, and all your deliberations can look at any issue, use your judgment, your common sense.
Thank you.
There's substantial change.
Don?
Another, just a question. Now that we're down to 99 lots, the deceleration lane is not required, but on our final approval here, it says prior to the submittal that all offsites would be made. Would that be in that, that that would have to be, the deceleration lane would have to be made before final plan?
That's correct. Yeah.
Beth? Oh. Sammy, do you have another one?
And I want to acknowledge that I do respect that our official duties here have to do with the 100-foot boundary and what was directed by the courts, and I want to honor that procedure. I think that also, all of us as citizens, and I know for me as an elected member, the only elected member of this body, when I'm aware of improvements, it's like schools and greater impacts, from a common sense standpoint, and I'm not an engineer, my husband is one, but I'm not, why on earth would we not have a left turn lane if you have right turn, if you have, you know, if they're correct, 90-degree turns, you've got slopes? I don't understand why we're not being a little bit more proactive. I totally respect that the study did not warrant it, but I'm driving around country roads now that are scary. It's happened, growth is happening so fast, so I just appreciated the fact to have my questions answered. And if it's something that we cannot require, I don't want to overstep our legal authority. I also do not want to be, take a, you know, not be receptive to citizen input, who, folks that live in that area, and maybe something has changed from the initial application in terms of Creekside Elementary and all these different connections to other schools. That was my only point. Sammy knows more about this than I will, and I'll shut up.
Thank you, ma'am. Sammy?
So, basically, am I hearing that no left turn? Is that, is it, you believe it's going to be hard to do without getting off the, within the property? And that would be property to the east? Yeah.
Don, go ahead.
I'd just like to just, I know what we're here for, but just some of the comments made by the people. I'd just like to clear up, I think some, they might be mistaken on some of this, and I'd like to ask the staff a few questions, if they could, on what we just heard from them. The, this subdivision does meet our conservation subdivision regulations. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And what is the, the open space requirement on this? I heard from them, it was 70%, and this one, 65%.
The requirement from the zoning ordinance is that they preserve at least 50% of the site as open space, and I believe they're in the neighborhood of 65%.
And do we, in any way, not follow the rules of the state as far as what we're doing here, as far as their regulations on the water?
Well, so, we're not charged with enforcing the state rules. We're charged with enforcing Williamson County rules, and we have reviewed this application, you know, in depth, and we, our conclusion is that it meets the Williamson County rules. The one thing that we did add to the condition is the additional UV capability, which really isn't the county's purview, but we added that even though that's a state function rather than a county function.
Right. Thank you. Other comments, questions, thoughts? Yes, sir.
Are we, this in compliance, it was brought up on the walking trails or whatever, but is it out of compliance or in compliance with the regulations?
There's no regulation that requires walking trails, and frankly, we don't require those to be depicted on a concept plan anyway. They may very well be proposing walking trails, but that's not something that we require. You know, sometimes that level of detail is shown on a concept plan, but not always. But they're not in violation of any county regulation.
Anyone else?
One more question.
Go ahead, Sammy.
It was brought up during the public discussion. If the monitoring wells reports start coming back with issues, that's a TDEC issue, correct? They would require, I assume, corrective action on the wastewater treatment plant owner? Is that, what, do we know that?
They would revise either the monitoring plan, or they would have to investigate what's causing the problem and would require adjustments in the treatment facility.
Okay.
But yes, that's totally within TDEC's purview.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That is, that if something is found out that it's not working right, then what happens with those property owners and those people that are living there at that point? If the water is not being taken care of well, the wastewater, then do they, is there water? Do they not have water anymore? Do they shut that off till that's fixed? How does that, how does that happen? What happens with that?
So, I think that the concern expressed by the neighbors is the treated wastewater that's being, that will be disposed of in the drip fields getting onto their property. So, it's not a matter of not having water. I think their concern instead is whether water that's not treated to a certain level will find its way into their property and into their ponds. So, you know, TDEC has guidelines relative to how, the level of treatment that has to take place, and the, therefore, the cleanliness, if you will, of the treated wastewater that comes out and gets applied to the drip field. So, it's not a matter of whether there would be, you know, water in the area, but rather, you know, I think their concern is one that is addressed, or we're attempting to address through the monitoring wells, even though our wastewater consultant and TDEC have indicated through their analysis that there shouldn't be any problem, but we added those as a condition, I guess just out of an abundance of caution, and to respond to some of the questions and concerns that they had.
But if there is a problem, what happens?
As Ms. Ransom said, I think if there's a problem, then TDEC would step in and correct the issue, make them correct the issue.
How, in what timeframe would that happen, do you think?
So, TDEC would see the monthly operational reports from the wastewater operator and step in at that point, presumably.
And what would they, what would...
I don't know. That's TDEC's...
A common plan of action.
That would be TDEC's responsibility to step in, and it entirely depends on what they found...
Sure.
...to know what to do with the system and how it's functioning.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Any further discussion? Did you want to make a comment? Are you just standing by because I invited you up, or what?
But I will, anyway, very briefly.
Go ahead.
Your system is based on regulations and ordinance. That is what has happened in this case. This subdivision, this concept plan complies with all those regulations. That's what staff has said. You have multiple reviews of that, and I just want to put that out there. We're not asking you to approve something that doesn't comply with your regulation.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? We'll prepare to vote. None? Is there a motion? Right now, we're trying to approve a 100-foot boundary per the court's order. That's what's up for motion and review. Okay? Yes, sir.
With this subdivision meeting all our current regulations that we have at this time, I'll make a move to approve staff's recommendation.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Any recorded? Motion carries. Thank you. Where is my damn agenda? Continuing on the public hearings, Agenda Item 15, Amendment to Article III of the Williamson County Zoning Ordinance Regarding Public Notice Signage for MAP Amendments Initiated by the County pursuant to an adopted plan. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you are aware, the county is in the process of updating its comprehensive land use plan. The draft plan will be before you for consideration of adoption at the March meeting. The draft plan recommends zoning changes in order to implement the policies of the plan. The zoning ordinance currently requires the following types of notice to be provided to the public prior to public hearings on zoning changes. The first is a public hearing sign posted on any property that is subject to a zoning change. Second, a mailed notification to property owners who are subject to a zoning change. And then, third, published notice of the zoning change in a newspaper of general circulation, which is the only notice required by state law. If the plan is adopted and the recommendation is implemented, the current public notice language would require approximately 9,500 signs to be posted at two different times, one prior to the Planning Commission public hearing and one prior to the County Commission public hearing. The cost of materials and labor, which would be, which would have to be outsourced, as well as the additional staff resources necessary to comply with this signage requirement, would be extreme. Additionally, signs would likely be considered an eyesore to county residents. Therefore, this text amendment would provide an exemption from the signage requirement, but only for rezonings that are initiated by the county in order to implement an adopted plan and involving 100 or more parcels. This amendment would not affect the requirements to provide mailed notice to every property owner and to publish the notice in the newspaper. Staff recommends approval of this text amendment and that the attached resolution be forwarded to the County Commission for adoption.
Comments, questions?
No.
Oh, we do have to have a public hearing. We have nobody signed up. Counselor, thank you. Motion made and seconded. Did I hear a second?
Yeah.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. That concludes the public hearings. Item 16 is withdrawn. Item 17, preliminary plat, preliminary plat review for TruBidor Golf and Fuel Club, Phase Two, containing 39 lots on 28.54 acres, locate off of Club View Drive in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, this item is a preliminary plat review for Phase Two of the development, which includes 39 lots and approximately an acre and a half of open space. The applicant has requested that action on this item be deferred until the March 2020 meeting in order to allow additional time to address staff comments, and staff concurs with the request.
Motion to defer. Motion made and seconded. Prepare to vote. Vote now. Or is that me? My eyes have crossed, guys. I didn't lick my thumb. Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda 18, preliminary plat review for Arrington Ridge, Phase One, revised, containing 33 lots on 73.72 acres, locate off Cox Road in the 5th Voting District.
A concept plan for this development was approved by this body at the May 2017 meeting, and the applicant is now requesting approval of a revised preliminary plat that will consolidate the two previously approved phases. The preliminary plat for Phase One of the development was approved at the August 2017 meeting and contained 12 lots, approximately 26 acres of open space, and the wastewater treatment and disposal system. The preliminary plat for Phase Two of the development was approved at the February 2019 meeting and contained 33 lots and approximately 51 acres of open space. The applicant is now requesting approval of a revised preliminary plat for Phase One, which now contains 33 lots, approximately 26 acres of open space, and the wastewater treatment and disposal system. The remaining 12 lots and open space shown on the original approval of Phase One has been labeled as future development. The revised preliminary plat is consistent in layout with the approved concept plan, and this approval will void the previously approved preliminary plats for Phase One and Phase Two. Staff recommends approval of the revised preliminary plat with the following conditions. Final plat must address the following. Number one, prior to final plat submittal, turn lane improvements on Cox Road must be completed to the, satisfy the Williamson County Highway Superintendent. Number two, prior to final plat submittal, a zoning certificate must be obtained for the completed wastewater treatment and disposal system. Prior to the issuance of the zoning certificate, the applicant shall provide the following. A, a letter from TDEC indicating that said treatment and disposal system was installed and is functioning. B, as-built drawings showing the location of all treatment system components and a sealed certification letter from the design engineer indicating that said treatment system was constructed in accordance with the approved construction plans and specifications. C, a letter from the owner slash utility provider indicating that it has accepted said treatment system and is currently operating same. D, the posting of a performance bond in the amount of $120,000 for said treatment and disposal system as specified by the county's wastewater consultant. And E, posting of a performance bond in the amount of $50,600 for landscaping improvements. Number three, prior to consideration of final plat approval, the applicant shall submit the HOA documents for review and approval by the county attorney's office. The HOA documents must be submitted with the final plat, and the approved HOA documents must be recorded concurrently with the recording of the final plat. Number four, establishment of a performance bond for roads, drainage, and erosion control. Number five, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements in favor of Millcrofton Utility District. Number six, establishment of a performance bond for the wastewater collection system. Number seven, submission of landscaping plans and establishment of a performance bond for landscaping. Number eight, execution of performance agreements for the above referenced sureties. Number nine, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And number 10, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinance System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Thank you, sir. Questions, staff? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Final, final flat... Final, final flat, under final plats, final plat review for the mill at Bond Springs, Section One, containing six lots on 9.035 acres located off of Bethesda Road in the 2nd Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A preliminary plat for this development was approved at the May 2019 meeting, and the applicant is now requesting final plat approval for the first section of, of the development, which contains six lots and approximately one acre of open space. The plat remains consistent in layout with that depicted on the preliminary plat. Staff recommends approval of the final plat with the following conditions. Number one, establishment of a performance bond for roads, drainage, and erosion control in the amount of $300,000. Number two, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements in favor of HB and TS Utility District in the amount of $59,465. Number three, establishment of a performance bond for landscaping in the amount of $48,200. Number four, execution of performance agreements for the above referenced sureties. Number five, the HOA documents must be submitted with the final plat, and the approved HOA documents must be recorded concurrently with the recording of the final plat. Number six, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And number seven, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinance System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Thank you, sir. Questions, staff? Comments? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. The motion carries. Thank you. Final Agenda Item under other business, establishment of a performance bond for landscaping for twice-daily convenience store on five acres located off Horton Highway in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
Chairman, a site plan for this use is underway, is under review by staff. However, due to the cost of the required landscaping improvements and pursuant to Section 16.07 of the zoning ordinance, a performance bond for landscaping improvements must be established by the Planning Commission prior to final site plan approval by staff. Staff recommends the establishment of a performance bond for landscaping improvements in the amount of $23,485.
My, is it me? My hearing, thanks. Questions, comments?
Who is this that we're talking about? The...
It's located at the corner of Horton Highway and Malachi Lane.
In Tryon?
Yes, in Tryon. Yes, ma'am.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Always back, way back up the road here. College Road. Okay. Okay. Got you.
Almost across, I guess, from the community center right there, kind of?
Yes, approximately. Yes.
Your motion? I got three seconds. That's good. Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Motion to adjourn? So moved. We're out of here. Thank you, and welcome new members.